All right. I think we're starting here. Welcome to our special board meeting to get reports on our budget presentations. I think we'll start with our roll call, please. Tracy? I'm certain we'll start with a roll call.
Supervisor Madron.
Present.
Supervisor Wilson.
Here.
Supervisor Bass.
Here.
Supervisor Bone.
Richard.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal treatment and justice for all.
I'll just ask, are there any modifications to the agenda? Is that a county or CIO? No modifications?
Sorry, Chair Bass. No, there are no modifications to today's agenda.
Thank you. So at this point, we will move on to the informational county department reports for fiscal year 2223, and I'll hand this over. Do you want to introduce it, Alicia, or just we go straight to the department heads?
I can definitely introduce it. Today is the second round of presentations from department heads. They've been coming to your board since 2015. This is an opportunity for department heads to engage with your board and the community on budget priorities, to express any potential challenges, and any other highlights that they would like to share with your board. And first today is Mari Wilson with the assessor.
With the assessor. Good morning, Chair Bass and board members. I'm Mari Wilson, county assessor. I'm pleased to give you some information about our office and our budget needs, and I will keep it brief, believe me. The assessor's office is responsible for the fair and equitable discovery, valuation, and assessment of all taxable property located in the county and applying exemptions where appropriate. We are directed by the California Constitution, the California Revenue and Taxation Code, and the State Board of Equalization. Every five years, our office is surveyed by the State Board of Equalization to make sure we are maintaining standards of appropriate measure. We are currently in the process of being surveyed, and a written report of the BOE's findings will be sent to your board at the completion of the survey. A certified assessment roll is produced each year at the end of June. The assessment roll is then turned over to the auditor and eventually to the tax collector, which produces tax bills, property tax bills. Property taxes are the largest source of discretionary revenue to the County General Fund. That makes the discovery, evaluation, and assessment of property very important to county revenue. Property taxes also fund schools, special districts, and public safety. For an overview of our office process, there are four departments in our office: transfer drafting, assessment front office, real property appraisal, and personal property appraisal. We receive recorded documents from the recorder's office. The transfer drafting department, which currently has four staff members, processes these documents for changes in ownership and changes to our assessor parcel maps. The assessment front office department, which currently has four staff members and one extra help person, is our public-facing staff who are first on the phones and at the counter for the public, answering questions and helping them with information. If they can't fully assist with issues, they will refer them to the appropriate staff to get the issue resolved. They also update property records for transfers, process permit information that we receive from the county's nine permitting entities, and process property tax exemptions and exclusions. The real property appraisal department, which currently has 11 staff members, values property per the transfer process, new construction, propate, temporary decline in value, yearly reviews, parcel reconfigurations, ag preserve contracts, timber production zone assessments, and possessory interest assessments. New construction is assessed by both the permitting process and the discovery of unpermitted new construction in the field. The new values are then input into our property tax system for assessment roll and supplemental assessment roll value changes. The personal property appraisal department, which currently consists of five staff members, sends out yearly reporting statements for businesses, vessels, and aircraft. These assessments are required to be valued yearly at the current market value. The State Board of Equalization provides depreciation schedules to be used in this mass appraisal process. They also perform yearly business auditing programs mandated by the State Board of Equalization. The management team with four staff members not only does the administrative office duties and assessment appeals, but also is involved in all other processes throughout the office. As for our budget request for this year, the 10% reduction will affect our bottom line. For 2122, our salaries and benefits made up 87% of our total budget. For 2223, our salaries and benefits will be 97% of our total budget. This leaves only salaries and benefits to cut. There is very little room in services and supplies or other central services to cut. We will be holding vacant positions open to allow for salary savings and will not be using extra help positions. We, like other departments, have struggled with filling positions and have had success with extra help. It has allowed us to fill some gaps, and we've been able to hire extra help staff into permanent positions. We will be submitting a request for additional general fund appropriation. This request will be for extra help funding and also funding for three positions currently held vacant due to the 10% budget reduction. So our budget request for 2223 will accomplish the county's 10% reduction as we continue to do all we can with what we have. We do hope we receive additional funding to ensure needed staffing levels without layoffs. Accomplishments for this year include a net increase to the assessment roll for 2021 of 2.68%, which brings increased revenue that will provide the county with additional funds, not only for the current fiscal year, but also for subsequent years. Also, our office has persevered through the pandemic, and with the exception of the time when the courthouse was closed to the public, we have been in the office and open for business as usual with lots of safety precautions in place. And that is my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Supervisor Bone, then Supervisor Madron.
I want to congratulate you on the last one of these you ever have to do.
I don't do too many. We are one of those departments that sort of flies under the radar.
No, I know.
You don't hear from us too much, so.
No, I know. Which is good. As a former supervisor, you just say, the less we hear, the better. No, I appreciate that. And then the growth rate, I know with the current uptick in real estate and what units are being sold, we're seeing some, we're seeing some pretty dramatic increases along those lines.
Residential has increased, as everyone knows from all the headlines. It's leveling off a little bit, but they did take some dramatic increases.
It leveled off pretty high.
Yeah. Land, on the other hand, is kind of, we're seeing a decline.
Yeah. And I'm not sure if we caught all of those in between anyway, so. Anyway, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for catching all those guys out there trying to register their boats in Oregon.
And Supervisor Madron?
That was my question as well, what the trend was in property taxes. So it's been answered, asked and answered. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So next up, is the auditor controller able to be here today?
Maybe I'll get that M. Wilson email address.
That's right. Maybe he'll be yours now.
You're getting a lot of backlog, too.
For those, yeah. People kept sending Mari emails that they thought were going to Supervisor Wilson. So do you have the auditor controller, was she able to be here today?
Chair Bass? No, the auditor controller is next on the docket, and she is traveling today and unable to present to your board, so we will move along to aviation. And Director Cody Rogatz is with us today.
All right. Thank you. Director Rogatz, welcome.
I did that last time. Thank you, Chair Bass, and members of the board for having me here today. It's been a couple of years since I've been before you for the budget meeting, so I was looking back pre-COVID on what we were covering, which was shortly after the development of our Department of Aviation, and just some of the areas that we covered in that conversation between that timeframe in 2019 and what we covered a few weeks ago regarding our department with some pretty major projects. And we have certainly come a long ways, with a long way still to go, to turn our airports around from where they started. The conversation a couple of weeks ago, we covered multiple millions of dollars in investment that we plan to make over the coming years to our airports. Fortunately for the county, the majority of those funds will be coming from the federal government. Right now, in fact, I just sent another email while Mari was up here presenting, we're trying to put the final, cross the final Ts and dot the final Is on approximately $18 million in federal funding to repave our main runway at ACV Airport and also upgrade the electrical system out there, both items that have not been touched in over two decades. We also talked about the CARES Act a couple of weeks ago, and I'm just touching on these high-level items as we are continuing on the budgeting for all of that, primarily with Tabitha and Karen Clower in the CIO's office. This level of funding is really unprecedented for our airports, and figuring out all of the details, which I won't cover here today, is certainly challenging because the county does have a role to play in that, albeit minor, when looking at the total dollar value. A couple of highlights that I did want to make, and really to say thank you. We do have eight additional positions in the last three and a half years in our Department of Aviation, and this has really helped us start to get to where we need to be for personnel to manage a six-airport system. Obviously, all of those positions have come before your board, and I certainly appreciate the support in that, as these positions, although not all filled at this time, will certainly be helpful as we start trying to maintain our airports in the fashion in which they should have been. We're continuing to pursue additional grant funding with the FAA and will over the coming budget year, and that will primarily be in the bipartisan infrastructure law. There was $25 billion in the bipartisan infrastructure law, which was over $1 trillion in total, but $25 billion allocated to airports. And we are pursuing that funding to try to do what we talked about a couple of weeks ago in comprehensive overhaul and expansion of our terminal facility, and also will be pursuing those funds to really try to start overhauling our general aviation airports that are present in, I think, all of your districts. So that's really the high-level overview that I wanted to give for you. I didn't want to rehash too much what I covered a couple of weeks ago, but that's really where our focal point is with the management team, is successfully implementing and executing those projects that we talked about, but also pursuing dollars for future years as well. Any questions?
Questions yet? Supervisor Bone?
I was told to keep it short, so that's what I tried to do.
You got that covered.
We forgot to tell Supervisor Bone that.
The flights to Las Vegas. I've had about four people call and says, man, the flights seemed fairly full. And you can tell me the numbers. The other concern we had, the flights were also very cost-effective, or I guess nobody's supposed to use the word cheap, but they were very, so I understand the fuel increases. I don't understand them. I know they're here.
Yep.
Where are we at with, why didn't we try raising the rates 20%? Why didn't we, I mean, just for them to cut them off like that, it has a lot of, was there more to the story? And if there's more to the story, tell us, rather than, they don't want to be so we can fix the problem. But I mean, fly Humboldt's turning into don't fly Humboldt, as, you know, I mean, the balloon's not even out of, the air's not even out of the party balloons when we welcome them in, and then they're stopping, so.
Sure.
I thought Vegas, I want to say, I thought Vegas was a fairly popular destination also.
I didn't fly it, but I didn't, but I did hear from other people, I've heard from a lot of people the last few days going, it was always full when I was on it, really full, or, you know.
Yeah. No, I appreciate the question, Supervisor Bone, through the chair. Vegas started out wildly successful, to the point where they were looking at possibly adding additional frequencies throughout the week, and a lot of that was driven by the demand around the holidays, and a lot of that is what led to the parking lot shortage that we talked about a few weeks ago. Since that timeframe, and January and February are typically our slowest months at ACV as far as passenger demand, the demand has dwindled off over the last couple of months, although Avelo identified to us that the primary decision was based on the fuel. They still think that there's hope in the market and that connection to Las Vegas. Our biggest struggle, and I'll try to keep this short, we are at a competitive disadvantage in the marketplace as far as the community, and we've worked really hard to try to establish a partnership with the Humboldt Lodging Alliance in developing a marketing program, and we had repeated requests from Avelo Airlines to try to help bolster the recognition of them being there. Avelo's a really small player at the Las Vegas airport. They're going up against very, very established and very big airlines in Southwest, and Allegiant, which their CEO at Avelo used to be the CEO of Allegiant. So he knows how to make Las Vegas successful, but we really need that marketing partnership or some sort of marketing support, because these airlines turn to us, and it's not as though they want the community to just spend, you know, an infinite amount of dollars, but they are coming to us looking for a partnership, where it's usually a 50-50 split, where the community kicks in 50%, they as an airline kick in 50%. And that's really critical, especially when you have a new airline, but also with service that we've never had before, to get the recognition here locally, but especially in Las Vegas as well, to drive people up to the North Coast. And that's something we desperately need with our other airlines as well, and what most communities our size are partnering with their local HLAs or whatever their version is to develop that marketing program.
Supervisor Bones?
Well, and that's, I agree. People who live in Las Vegas in July can pull up the temperature here and go, good God, this airport's only 67 degrees at its height.
Yep.
And it's got redwood trees, you know.
Yep.
The number-one sort of thing on the internet. So as we, you know, for California, so as we do that, I agree. I know we get help from the economic, but these are things most of us don't like to hear after they're gone, and when we, you know, when we try to market, I don't know where we're missing. I think we're all kind of missing a little bit on that, so I don't know how we can do better. Fuel prices will drop. They'll never drop to what they were, because that's not the way they work, so. But as we move forward, I still think we should be more cognizant, because it's also, with the loss of two airlines in six months, it's going to be hard to convince me that, you know, we need to spend $5 million on more parking.
And.
So I'm just saying, we just, you know, and so.
Yeah. And that investment in parking through the chair, Supervisor Bone, is something that the infrastructure needs it anyways. The parking lot is falling apart. We're trying to take addressing that as a window of opportunity to expand it, and certainly I would love to pick up the conversation on how we can develop that community partnership, because that's something we've never had locally, to my knowledge, either is that strong partnership. HLA has helped the airport in the past through minimum revenue guarantees to attract new airlines. I'm certainly not saying they haven't been helpful. They've been a partner to the county and to the airport in the past. This marketing endeavor is a new concept that we presented to them over the last couple of months. It's not something that we have traction on yet. We're still pursuing that, but either that or through a different funding stream, it's a program that we desperately need to implement to work on that retainage of airlines.
Supervisor Bushnell, I have a question as well.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you, Director Rogatz, and I just want to thank you for your continued efforts to improve the rural airports, especially, I have three in my district, and I know that we've met and had lots of discussion and looking for funding, and I really appreciate that, as I do appreciate it in a whole for entirety of Humboldt. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell, through the chair, and we are, one of the emails I sent this morning, as we're wrapping up the FAA grant season, the deadline is today, we're still trying to crunch the numbers and figure out a wildlife assessment for the Ronerville Airport, and that would, once done with that assessment, lead to, hopefully, an avenue to get some new fencing down there. I know we've talked about that.
Thank you for that, and thank you for recognizing that that is important in maintaining that airway and keeping the animals off that runway.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I think my thoughts were, well, I understand what Supervisor Bone said about two airlines. It's not necessarily two airlines. There was two routes, and one airline never really took off in the first place. It seems like the Tahoe route, which was unfortunate. I was thinking that's the only way I want to go there in the winter, but it didn't work. But it is concerning. I had seen some emails going across about trying to create a relationship to help with this marketing. I didn't realize how much was behind it and how much was riding on it, and so, you know, if we have to get HLA to the table with us, or what we need to do, please reach out to, you know, alternate sources to try to figure out how and where we can help.
Sure.
Like I said, I realized there was a concern, did not realize that it was this potentially damaging, basically, to not try to follow through, and it wasn't you. I know you guys were trying.
Yeah. No, absolutely. Thank you, Chair Bass. The airline industry is probably at its most volatile state right now. Sure, there's been some new airlines developed, Avelo being one of them in the marketplace, but they not only face the fuel challenge that Avelo identified to us with their recent decision, they also place, excuse me, face, an unprecedented staffing shortage. And sure, the pilot shortage is grabbing headlines almost on a daily basis, and it's getting worse and worse, especially for markets like ours. We haven't experienced our regional service being impacted in any way yet, either through United or American, but that could be impacted in the future. Most communities across the country our size have seen some sort of schedule fluctuation or reduction, because they just simply do not have the pilots to fly all the routes that they want to fly. On top of that, behind the scenes, and it isn't grabbing as many headlines, all of the airlines are facing critical shortages in their maintenance capabilities, and that's problematic as well. And I know there's work going on at College of the Redwoods and Cal Poly Humboldt and exploring opportunities to try to be part of the solution for that here regionally, and we continue those conversations with both of those entities as well.
And I guess the last question I've been getting is, how's Burbank? Everyone really loves Burbank, and I'd be very sad.
Yeah. Yeah. We put together a press release to share the sad news last Friday about Las Vegas. We did include a short snippet in there about Burbank. It continues to perform very well. Seasonally, they are adding between mid-June and mid-August, for the high summer season, a fourth weekly flight, so it's a very positive thing, and that could continue, depending on what that demand looks like for that two-month window. The other thing, too, with the volatility of the airlines, Avelo has been successful as a new airline for almost one entire year now, because they make these tough decisions and they make it very quickly, and that's really where the marketing piece would help us adapt to those changing conditions and possibly keep services around in the long term.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. Cody, great job at the airport, you and all your staff. I mean, you guys have taken on a tremendous amount of work in the last several years, and I think everybody sees the wonderful progress happening at the airport, and for the most part, I think folks are happy for the extra flights, but I will say, knocking on doors all over McKinneyville, that the issue comes up. If you live under the flight path, you know, it's like, the benefits kind of go equally to the whole community for opportunity, but the impacts go to a narrow swath, right? If you're under the flight path, then people are not real happy right now, for the most part, although some are, right? Some say, I love seeing the big planes going over. So it's sort of varied, maybe 50-50 or so. It's not a scientific survey, but I've knocked on over 1,000 doors in the last several weeks. So the other thing is SO2 emissions. People are very concerned, and some people have even installed meters on their home to try and look at that. So we talked about this before. I know it's not immediate on the horizon, but ultimately, electric planes, quieter, no SO2 emissions, you know. So a lot of folks are thinking, boy, that will be a wonderful day when we get there. I hope it's not 50 years. Maybe it's 10. I don't know. There's a lot to figure out there. But just wanted to share that input from the community, and I want to thank you. Whenever I've had this kind of input in writing, I forward that to you. You're very quick at responding and addressing people's concerns, so I want to thank you for that. The land surveys, are we done with that yet?
We're still working on it. That's been a staffing issue, but we're still working through that. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because that's, as I understand it, the next thing that has to happen to be able to move forward with our economic development plan of creating the Vista Point Park, which will be a huge boon for McKinneyville's economic, you know, base in terms of pulling people off the highway, first place you see the ocean, since you've seen it at the Golden Gate Bridge, and you come over that bluff, and you can't even get into the Vista Point right now unless you turn around at Clam Beach. So we've got a lot of money going past the community that if we had a really good airport road off-ramp system into the Vista Point, we'll pull people off, and then they're going to want to stay at a motel. Pretty soon, the airport business park starts filling out. So I look forward to when the survey is done, and we can work together with our economic development team, because I know there's grant money's out there to go get it and make this happen, so.
Sure.
Thank you for continuing to push those things forward. Got a lot on your plate.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron, through the chair, and I live in that flight path, so when I'm not at the office, that's where I'm usually at, so. And certainly, it's not something that bothers me, but everybody has their own take, but I appreciate you sharing that, and I know it's been a change. It is a small, very small decimal increase with the larger aircraft, but I did want to note on the electrification of aircraft, that's something we're working on at the state level as far as airport management, and what can we be doing better for facilities moving forward and projects, and we're hopeful to have some meetings with Senator McGuire and Representative Wood and, or Assemblymember Wood, and representatives and senators from all over the state here in the next couple of months, and that's going to be a topic at hand, so, thank you.
All right. Well, you made it short, and we extended it, but thank you.
Supervisor Wilson, nothing.
I talk to you all the time.
Yeah.
That would just purely be for show at this point.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you. Next, child support services. Am I correct? Welcome.
Thank you.
And welcome to your first one of these.
Yes, this is my first one. Thank you, Chair Bass. Good afternoon, board members. I'm Bennett Hoffman, the Director of Child Support Services.
Oh. This better? Okay. Thank you. I'm Bennett Hoffman, the Director of Child Support Services, and with me today is Elizabeth Holloway, the Assistant Director. We'll breathe as brief as we can and then take any questions you have. I'm going to start with an overview of the child support program. Does this work? Oh.
Like I said, it is your first time.
Yes.
Actually, we're all trying to figure the system out, too.
That's why I have Elizabeth here. So the child support program, just an overview, we're a federally mandated program. We get our budget money from the federal and the state government. We don't expend any county dollars in Humboldt County. There we go. Thank you. So our allocation comes from the State Department of Child Support Services, and it's based on a formula that uses caseload size and cost per employee. So we're a regional department in Humboldt County. North Coast child.
North Coast Child Support is the department that employs staff and operates offices in both Humboldt and Trinity Counties, with Humboldt as the lead county. This is something that became effective in 2016 with an agreement by your board and the Board of Trinity County. And both boards renewed this agreement in December of 2021, and that will continue for at least the next five years. So we like operating as a regional department. It allows us to increase our efficiencies, spread, allocate our resources between both departments. Just a little bit about the core purpose of our department. We really strive to be neutral facilitators for parents receiving and paying child support, and just a high level of what we do. We establish paternity for children born in California. And then we are also going to establish, maintain, review, and modify court orders for child support. Then we're going to work with parents to make sure they can provide and adhere to the obligations of the court orders. We help maintain and manage the payment records. And then another part of child support is the orders usually address private insurance benefits for the children. Here's where we are as a combined region right now as far as case count goes. This is Trinity and Humboldt, 5,606 cases. As you can see, this is a trend that we've been going down over the last few years. This is not unique to Humboldt or Trinity County. This is a state trend and a national trend. I think there's a lot of complex reasons why case counts are down. I'm not very concerned from the standpoint of if people don't need our services anymore or they're leaving because the birth rate is low, for example, we don't have as many, as much demand. It's not bad that your case count is down. If it's down because we're not providing the right services, or people don't have access to our services, or they don't know about us, then that's a concern. So our big focus as a state department and also as a region is to try to figure out why this is happening and make sure our services are accessible, communicating our program. We find a lot of people don't know what we do. And in California, it's a little concerning because we are behind as far as the rest of the nation goes. One in four children in the child support program are part of the government program. And in California, it's only one in seven children are served by the child support program. So we, as a department, have work to do in this area. One positive trend, at least we believe it's a positive trend here, is the amount of child support going directly to families. If you know, historically, child support started back in the '70s as a welfare recruitment program. And so that was the primary focus, is to take that money and use it to pay back benefits from welfare. Over the last few years, the trend has changed a little bit from a policy and legal standpoint. And the program's trying to be more family-friendly. And what we found through a lot of research is that if you want to keep families out of poverty, the best thing to do is to try to get that money to them directly. And that's really how we view the program, is an anti-poverty program. If people can get consistent child support, reliable child support, they're less likely to go on public assistance, and they're less likely to be in a situation where they fall into poverty. So now to the challenges. We had a 14% reduction in funding from the state in 2021. That happened as a result of COVID, and that's never been restored. So we are flat-funded right now. We're going to get the same money approximately that we got the last two years. The second one, and I would say probably the biggest issue for us, is the lack of timely accounting postings. And the reason this is a big issue for child support is we have to adhere by the requirements of the state as far as posting money. So as you can see on the screen, there's $456,000 from fiscal year '20 and '21 that were not posted. That money is gone now from the perspective as we cannot go back and claim that on the fiscal year 2021 budget. When those postings catch up, we're going to have to claim them on the fiscal year '21, '22 budget. Or if it continues and they don't get posted for a very long time, we'll have to claim it on whatever budget year it gets posted.
I hate to say this. So you're saying that $456,000 is completely no longer on our radar to...
We can't go back and claim it in the year that it should have been spent, the year that we spent it.
Claiming it this year would actually, would that then make us not, well, it just sounds like a mess.
If we, that's the big issue because that's almost 10% of our budget. If we start to catch up with our postings and that gets posted this year along with everything else that we spent this year, it's going to put us over budget because we don't have that kind of cushion in our budget. So it's unfortunate because we underspent in fiscal year 2021. That's when we would have wanted that money to post, and now it's going to post in the future.
Well, I had Supervisor Bushnell and then Bone.
Thank you through the chair. You actually answered my question as you continued to explain, so thank you.
Supervisor Bone.
And since I hear all this so often, did you get all the numbers in on a timely fashion, in a proper fashion?
We did. There might have been a couple times where we didn't, but for the most part, yes. Our fiscal people have been working very hard to get the numbers in. We communicated very often in written format, email format. I even sent a letter to the Yodders' Office explaining the situation and what was going to happen if that money didn't post.
Thank you.
All right, continue.
And we've got the same issue as everybody else related to the vacancy rate and staff shortages. I think ours is probably around 15% to 20% right now. We have lost a lot of institutional knowledge. We've had a lot of retirements over the last couple of years. And so that just has a further impact when you're dealing with staff shortages. So a couple opportunities we have for the future and accomplishments. One thing I wanted to note, because our staff worked really hard on this. They piloted a simplified online application. This is something that the state created. And they worked with our county and I think three or four others to pilot it, to refine it. Part of the reason that people might not use our program, it's very complex to navigate. And the old application is very complex to fill out, so we're trying to simplify it and make it easier and make our program more accessible. The next one, where, as I mentioned, we have the situation where our budget is kind of flat-funded. We have been working on a building remodel to reduce our space. We don't need all the space that we have anymore. Our department, as you saw by the case count, has declined significantly. We have about twice the space we need. We've already been successful in working with the CAO's office to sublease that space to Economic Development. And we're going to continue to remodel the building so we can have even further space to sublease to someone else. One of the things that we had to do to make sure that we were staffing our caseload consistently, and this was a great accomplishment by our staff as well, is we contracted with Napa County. This is a MOU that your board approved, I believe, in the fall of last year for caseworker services. So while we are trying to recruit and retain staff, it would have been a great detriment to us from the standpoint of managing our cases in Humboldt County if we weren't able to contract with Napa County. And we are now going to, over the next year, use two full-time caseworkers from Napa County until we get people hired. This is just a temporary solution. And then the other thing we're really excited about is we are going to have at least one or two staff at the center in McKinneyville, and we're looking forward to that. The last slide I have for you is just to give you an idea of our Humboldt County revenue. One of the great things about the fact that we're a regional department is we have two budget allocations to work with. The state gives Humboldt County and Trinity County separate budget allocations. While I mentioned Humboldt County is flat-funded, we're considered an overfunded county by the state, so we're probably going to continue to be flat-funded, or they're going to reduce our allocation. The good news is Trinity County is considered an underfunded county. So Trinity County's allocation is actually going to go up this year almost 30%.
Why do they call underfunded? I mean, overfunded, let's put it that way.
Yeah, that's a great question, and that term is actually really contentious for some people because even though that's the language they use, nobody's overfunded. Nobody has so much money that they have more than what they can, than they need. So that's just the designation that they use. What they use is a formula, and they say, "This is the pot of money we have at the state, and based on your caseload size and the costs that you charge for FTE, this is the amount of money you should get. And so if you come in above that, you're overfunded. If you come in below that, you're underfunded." So the nice thing about sharing costs and sharing money as a region is that we got an initial allocation from the state, same thing we got last year. We are going to be able to take part of Trinity's allocation for our expenses and add that to Humboldt's allocation. It'll be reduced for the Napa caseworkers that we're going to pay for this year. And so our total allocation for Humboldt will actually go up because we have a bigger Trinity allocation to use. And we're doing things a little bit differently. The state is actually going to do all of this on the front end. They're going to take the money and adjust it for Trinity and Napa on the front end. In the past, it was a lot of work for our fiscal people. We had to do that on the back end. We had to bill Trinity, and then Trinity would send us money, and we're not going to do that anymore. Anything else? Anything I missed?
Any questions? Supervisor Madron? All right. Well, I guess no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we've got the Clerk Recorder and Elections. Please, Ms. Sanders and team.
Welcome. Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Bass and members of the board. And with me today, I have Ben Hirschberger, who is our fiscal officer for both the Clerk Recorder and Register of Voters Office. So first, I'll just start off with a little bit of background about the Recorder's Office for any new members that we might have that haven't been here for a presentation of ours yet. For the Clerk Recorder's Office, we're the official repository for all documents and maps relating to land in Humboldt County. Recording of documents affecting land in Humboldt County accomplishes the mandate to impart constructive notice of any action affecting title to real property. So once a document is recorded, it becomes part of the official record of the county. Our revenues are generated through the collection of recording fees mandated by state law and the sale of copies of documents. We're also the repository for vital records, events that occur in Humboldt County, so that's birth, death, and marriages. We also provide a variety of different services, including issuing marriage licenses, performing civil marriage ceremonies, filing various registrations and notices, and administering oaths. So some of the achievements that we've achieved this year, in the last year. We've been able to expand on our self-service web portal, which provides useful online tools to the public. We have our indexes online from 1979 to the present. So anyone who's interested in doing research no longer has to come into our office to do the research. They can do that 24/7 from the comfort of their home. They can also purchase and self-print any non-certified copies of documents going back as far as April of 1999. And we've also allowed some of the other county departments, especially during COVID, to have access to our recording system for searching that they may need. So the Planning Department, the Treasurer-Tax Collector's Office, and the Assessor's Office now all have access through their offices without having to come to the Recorder's Office to do any research that they may need to do. We've also recreated an online index, enabling people to search the county California Environmental Quality Act filings and postings. So that's all available online now. And our self-serve web portal also allows couples applying for a marriage license to start the process in advance. Those are required to be in person unless you have set up a video and DocuSign type of a setup. And so they can start the process here locally in advance, and it saves us about 50% of the time when they come in to finish things up. One of the things that we're most proud of and we're almost ready to implement is e-recording. So e-recording, we've been working on that for quite some time. We have gotten our certification through the Department of Justice. All of our staff have gone through their LiveScan and are ready to go with that. The actual training for e-recording starts tomorrow. So tomorrow, Wednesday, our staff will be trained on e-recording. So it should be fully implemented by the end of April. So we're extremely excited about that. There've been some hurdles along the way just with coordinating time with our vendor and the IT department, but it's all coming together now, and we're very excited about that.
Supervisor Bone has a question?
Sure.
Does this tie into, I saw something the other day that they're switching to, or the opportunity for e-notary?
Yeah, that's coming down the pike as well, and that could be used.
Is that in conjunction, or is that why we're doing what we're doing, to be in line with that, or?
No, that's, e-recording's been around for a long time, and I've been trying to get this up and going for probably this whole term. And, but e-notary is a new thing, and that will be very useful for us, too, once e-recording is up.
Yeah, I just saw it the other day, and I'm going, so the gals running out with their bags to the door and everything. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. As far as our revenues have gone, we did experience a downward trend in documentary transfer tax in the 2019-2020 cycle, and then it started to climb. So between 2020-21 to 21-22, we went from about $600,000 in documentary tax to approximately $980,000. So it was quite a trend. That's now tapered off and is starting to slowly decline again. For our goals for this upcoming year is to further develop and implement plans for digitizing additional documents. We hope to be able to provide digitized documents for viewing online farther back than 1999. We are in the process of implementing a restrictive covenant program. And this requires us to readact unlawful information and documents that might make reference to race, religion, sex, gender, that type of thing. Ben's been working on a storage facility that we have secured up on the fifth floor, much-needed storage facility. And he's working on getting that, making that a secure storage area. So we hope to get that finished up this coming year as well. And then also, we are increasing our automation in our vital records department. Right now, we're having to use a third-party vendor for part of the process, but we have figured out a way to get around that, and so we'll be implementing that in the new fiscal year as well. but we have figured out a way to get around that, and so we'll be implementing that in the new fiscal year as well. And then, of course, a continuing goal is to always improve or to assess staffing needs and trainings to help maximize proficiency for our office. So if no one has any questions, I'll move into the elections portion?
Looks good.
Any questions? Okay. So just briefly, the main functions for elections are that we maintain the voter rolls and conduct county-wide, state, federal, local, and district elections in accordance with federal and state laws. We oversee candidate filing for elections. We're the filing officer for statements of economic interest and campaign financial documents. We assist special and school districts with district governing board vacancies and appointments. Some of the accomplishments that we've had for 2021-22, where we conducted the gubernatorial recall election. At that time, we had over 86,000 active registered voters, and 51,962 voters cast a ballot in that election, so just a little over 60%. Of those voters that cast a ballot, 93% of them did so by mail. And so that's been a real big trend here recently. During COVID, we had state emergency legislation that required that all counties mail a vote-by-mail ballot to every voter in their county. And we went from about 66% of our voters voting by mail to 93% voting by mail, both in the presidential 2020 general election and in the gubernatorial recall election. The state required us to develop a budget, because they wanted to reimburse the counties for the special recall election. At the time that we had to submit our budgets, we didn't know what size the ballot was going to be, whether it was going to be one sheet of paper or two, or what the postage costs were going to be. So we just had to kind of give them worst-case scenario. So our county secured $585,000 from the state, which they paid in advance of the election. The total cost of the recall election was just a little over $494,000. So the remaining $90,000 can be used to offset costs for the June 2020 primary election. This past year, we did an assessment of our staffing needs. A lot of our processes and elections have changed. It used to be we needed a lot of people in the front office that could do data entry for voter registration forms, and most voters now register online, so that need has diminished. But there's a lot of processes and procedures on the other side that are more demanding. So we de-allocated one of our election specialist positions, and we've created a second administrative analyst position. And by doing so, we hope that in the long run, that will distribute the workload a little better and cut down on any overtime that the department experiences. We've also been able to obtain authorization to access the California Secretary of State's County Test Environment, CTE, which allows county staff to participate in statewide mock elections. So anytime one of our vendors has new software updates, any county that's set up to be in this environment, we can test different scenarios, find out where there's any glitches, and help identify those before that system goes live. It's a great way for our staff to practice things and to train new staff, because you're not dealing with live data. We've also implemented some additional security measures at the elections office. We've added a key fob access to track authorized personnel in our secure ballot area and also at our workstations using multi-factor authentication. One other thing that we did was we upgraded our phone system using COVID dollars. This allowed us to have additional phones and additional phone lines. And what we used that for was to implement a call center on Election Day. The call center was, because since everybody is now being mailed a vote-by-mail ballot, and if you want to come in and vote in person, if you don't bring your vote-by-mail ballot with you to surrender, you end up having to vote what's called a provisional ballot, and we were really trying to reduce the number of provisional ballots that voters would have to vote. So we developed a call center so that the poll workers could call into the elections office, find out if the voter who did not have their ballot to surrender had already voted, and if they had not, the person on the call center was able to void that ballot, and then the poll worker could issue the voter a regular precinct ballot, and they were done, you know, they voted that day. So in the primary 2020 election, we did not have the call center in place. About 9.9% of the voters that voted in the primary 2020 election voted provisionally. So for the first time, we implemented the call center was for the general election in 2020. And at that time, 2.5% of the voters voting voted provisionally. And in the most recent recall election, 1.4% of the voters voted provisionally. So we went from having about 4,700, a little over 4,700 provisional ballots in the primary 2020 election to having a little over 700 provisional ballots in the recall election. So that's been a big time saver for us. The provisional ballots are all done manually. They take a lot of time to process, both at the polling location and at our office when they come back. So that's really saved us a lot of time. Some of our goals for this upcoming year, we're still working towards becoming a vote-center county, and we want to do some outreach to our stakeholders to participate in evaluating if Humboldt County should move to a vote center. Some of the forms of outreach are public meetings, community organization meetings, and public online comments. We're also working with our IT department and an outside vendor to establish secure connectivity at polling locations in anticipation of moving to the vote-center model for conducting future elections. And then one of our other major goals is to increase resiliency against power outages through the fortification of our backup power systems. So those are the things that we have coming up on our agenda for the next fiscal year. Does anybody have any questions?
Supervisor Wilson, and then Madron?
I'm hoping that you reach out to our CEA on the backup power part of this, because we should be really, when we're thinking about backup power for any of these facilities, we should be really thinking about what it can do for resiliency beyond just the siloed function of whatever you are, what are things we see in the building, and also what can provide to the community if there is a need. So I think that's pretty important, so I appreciate that. And it is just really interesting, the changes that we're seeing in how people interface, both with their office space, but then also in these spaces now that, you know, we've gone through this, so much that we've gone through in the last two years in terms of that. Yeah, it's just very, very interesting, and I'm hoping we're really looking to the future on that. Do you think there's any interest in, actually, there's some talk about there has been voting online, voting. Is that still out there, or is that just still pretty taboo?
That's still pretty taboo. The closest we've got to that is what's called Remote Accessible Vote-by- Mail. But that's an online ability to access your ballot. And when that was originally developed, that was for voters who were in the military or living overseas, or voters who had disabilities. But because of the pandemic and because of all the fire seasons that we have had, so many people have been displaced that they've now opened that up to any voter in the state of California to obtain their ballot materials. So there's a process that they have to go through, but they can go through it through our website, and our office could assist them with that. And they can start requesting those ballot materials 29 days prior to the election. They can download the information. If it's someone that's disabled, they can download it into their device that will help them mark the ballot, and then they can print it out. They can't email voted ballots back to us, but they can fax them, or they can put them in an envelope that would come in their packet with their ballot, which is kind of a fold-up envelope, and send it back.
Still using faxes. Amazing.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Madron, then Bushnell?
Thank you, Kelly. I just want to commend you and your staff for all the hard work you've done to improve the systems and make accessible online searching for information and stuff. Those are all really wonderful things. And, you know, the things I hear about the elections office in particular, it's the best elections office in the state. I mean, there's tremendous trust in your office and the process that your staff use to collect all of our votes and put all that out there. So I just want to commend you and your staff on that incredible work, because voter confidence, that's a pretty important thing in these days, right?
It is.
So thank you for increasing that during your term.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell, then Bone?
Thank you.
Not Supervisor Bone, sorry.
Thank you. Through the chair. Kelly, thank you for the detailed report, and that helped me a lot as the new person. And then I think this is your last presentation also. So thank you for all your service that you've done for our community in Humboldt. And I echo what Supervisor Madron said. There's a lot of trust in your department and well-received throughout the counties. So I just want to commend you.
Great, thank you so much.
You guys have been amazing every time I ask for help, and even today. You know, I don't think people realize that you also have the information for the special districts, and it's not just about the elections that most people see or notice. So you've got a lot of work that you have to do. And I have heard really good comments on, this sounds awful, but how you've been able to update the elections rolls when people have passed away. You know, it's done like within a week or two, isn't it? So people are removed, you know, fairly quickly, and I think that wasn't the impression before, so. Anyone else? All right, thank you both.
Thank you so much.
And next, we have the library. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Chair Bass. I have my colleague, Anna Jordan, Executive Secretary, with me to provide some support and some help. Tracy, do you have the PowerPoint there? Oh, great. Okay, thank you. And thank you, Supervisors, for providing me with some time to share with you library accomplishments, goals, challenges, and opportunities. I think if there is one, actually, three themes that kind of define the last year. They were engaging and forging bonds with other community partners to really get a lot of our big initiatives off the ground and to bring them, you know, into fruition. We have some major projects that were impossible to achieve kind of on our own, and that is one area I really want to focus on. And you'll see it kind of is a theme that kind of transcends all these different areas. Another one was seeking outside funding sources on the local, state, and federal levels for the programs and initiatives. And then, thirdly, safely reintroducing library services after being closed to the public during COVID. It's kind of the challenge of offering safe, in-person services and moving ahead and kind of coming back to where we were prior to the onset of COVID, and then looking ahead to the future on different resources and services we want to offer. So... Next slide, not going. Okay, thank you. All right. So one thing we did, we opened the Garberville Library, a brand-new site for us, a part of the mini-complex, and couldn't have been done without really working closely with the CAO compliance team, DHHS, and other county departments. And it has state-of-the-art Wi-Fi, a very comfortable lobby, a brand-new collection. It's an amazing destination. Next. We also leveraged a lot of local support. For example, I worked with the Friends of the Garberville Library and Southern Humboldt Chamber of Commerce Director to raise funds for both the library collection and some of the resources. A big contributor was Vocality Credit Union, who contributed $10,000 primarily to a Spanish-language collection for adults and kids. Next. We had furniture that was provided by the Humboldt Library Foundation for the children's section, and also seating and tables in the lobby provided by the McLean Foundation. Next. We're going to add two libraries to the Scenic Broadband Network, providing fiber to 10 out of 11 of our libraries in May. Today, we had IT staff working on network switches at the Eureka Library, trying to get everything connected. So I think we're looking forward to the broadband at the Kim Yurton Library in Hoopa, as well as the Willow Creek Library. A very exciting prospect. Another new program is the Library at Your Door program. $50,000 were raised by the Humboldt Library Foundation for this innovative program to bring library materials to individuals that have difficulty accessing the library and also to different agencies, senior centers, care homes, et cetera. So looking at different models, service models, that will help bring library resources and services to more people. Next. We also engaged in a leadership and management initiative very similar to the county-wide Great Workplace and Culture Change Initiative. We did this in-house with our seven-member management team, focusing on communication, participatory leadership, supervision, and support to really, as much as we can, create an environment where employees have opportunities to share their gifts and get support that's very unified and collaborative from their supervisors. The State Library has $439 million this year in library infrastructure grant funds, largely due to the efforts from State Librarian Greg Lucas. And it's really a once-in-a-generation opportunity. Generally, state funding for library initiatives are for programs and services. This grant, called Building Forward, focuses on library infrastructure. I work with city staffs from the City of Arcata, the City of Fortuna, as well as the county Public Works and CAO compliance team to develop three proposals. There's a two-to-one match that the state provides, and it will be, the grant focuses on life safety and critical infrastructure. And we're hoping to hear if these proposals are successful. Early summer, late spring, there isn't a finite date. We submitted the applications on March 21st. The Arcata Library is looking at improving paths of travel, making their restrooms ADA compliant. Fortuna, or I'm sorry, Eureka is focusing on the parking lot access. Also, pickup, drop-off... also pickup-drop-up spots, internal paths of travel. We have a ramp that's very difficult to navigate for altered-abled individuals. And then replacing, we have an old boiler from when the library was built in 1995 that isn't working very well, so we'll replace two boilers. And then also the climate control system for our server room. Finally, with the Fortuna project, they're also looking to eliminate some ADA barriers, and they're looking at solar panels, much as Director Sanders had just mentioned, for backup power if we have a planned power outage, the PSPS, or if there is power lost, it'll give individuals in the community a place to go to charge their devices, a place to study, and a place to meet if they need to in the event of a power loss at their business or in their home. So those are the three different applications that libraries have currently with the state for, I think, this very innovative program. And I'm really excited about it and hope we can get that kind of funding. Most of our work, and including all of our budget preparation, is informed by the county's strategic framework and the library's strategic plan. Areas that were identified as priorities included access, and in that we're trying to provide that through the vehicles with the Library at Your Door program, and then also extending our open hours. Next slide, please. We've been without our first five outreach van and that delivers materials to different head start sites and preschool campuses throughout the county. The person who was the youth services outreach coordinator resigned during COVID, and we've just recruited a new individual. So we're, hopefully she will be starting in May, and we can bring that program back. Another thing I had mentioned already is the implementing that Library at Your Door program. So we're really increasing our outreach during these times. We also want to do more with health education, increasing interactive exhibits at our locations, and implementing a state, a system-wide, safety-focused training program for staff. We also have a great opportunity to help job seekers and provide access to workforce development tools through a grant through the State Library. We have LinkedIn Learning, which used to be Lynda.com, and Job Now, Vet Now resources. We also want to reconvene our Workforce Development Resource Group that was active about a year and a half ago, and work again with economic development. In 2019, we presented a Career Resource Access and Business Fair, and we want to kind of offer those events again as it becomes safer to have large gatherings at the library. Next slide. Other goals include getting a more user-friendly catalog interface. We are piloting a program called Vega through our integrated library system. So we're getting a discounted rate, and hopefully it'll provide tools that'll make it easier for individuals to connect with the library, order materials, see what programs we have to offer, et cetera. Also, we would like to expand the hours at the Garberville and Ferndale Libraries. So our budget proposal highlights, we want to add one FTE as that, at the Senior Library Assistant level, to provide services through the Library at Your Door program. The Garberville Library is by far the most remote location. It serves a large geographical area. It is also the library that is in the furthest proximity from another library location. Currently, it's open 40 days a week. We would like to open that location five days a week. So our proposal is to increase that branch manager position from .8 FTE to 1.0. We have some similar challenges at the Ferndale Library. We have run recruit, we ran a recruitment earlier this year and had a difficult time recruiting an employee at the .56 rate. We, the Ferndale Library has been providing extra hours, I'm sorry, the City of Ferndale has been providing extra hours that we provide as the County of Humboldt to augment their open hours. And we would like to extend what we offer in Ferndale as well. Right now, there's some gaps in services where the libraries close for a couple hours.
Supervisor Bone.
Have we improved the internet quality in Ferndale yet?
That is the last library that hasn't been brought onto the scenic network. So we're applying for both federal and state funds for the Ferndale Library this coming fiscal year. Okay, so, yeah, I think that, I think it is, in many ways, it's been challenging with all the different ISPs that operate in that area, yeah. And then with salary savings, we've had during the COVID era, we plan to use our fund balance to balance our budget. And a breakdown of our budget, about three-fifths of our costs are salaries and benefits. We're looking at ways we can, you know, augment our programs and services through grant, ongoing grant writing and funding, and local support. Next slide. And I think one of our opportunities, and I don't think we're unique in this situation, is that we struggle with our staffing capacity. And we have about eight positions right now that are vacant, and we're looking forward to getting those recruitments filled, restoring our pre-COVID levels and beyond with our open hours and services. And then a goal is to have a teen service librarian. I think teens are a much underserved population in our communities and in the library world. So I know I started a teen space that was very popular in Fortuna in 2005. We would like to make a more dynamic, vibrant space that's well-staffed at the Eureka Library. And finally, a challenge for me is that I have currently 13 direct reports, and I often struggle providing the support that they need day-to-day. And big-picture looking, not in this fiscal year, but in fiscal years, probably '23, '24, looking at recruiting division managers to help with that capacity, or a assistant library director. And thank you for all your support, and thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. And Supervisor Bushnell?
And I know the front steps of the Eureka Library have been maintained a little bit better lately, because I'm not getting the calls, and I, you know, I go by every once in a while, and we don't seem to have a problem there. So I'm glad that's working out.
Thank you. Yeah, we have overnight security now, and I think that communication between Eureka PD, our own security team, Securitas, that's there during library open hours, and SVT working together, and have provided that.
And we, did we, did we or did we not turn the Wi-Fi off at night?
Wi-Fi is on.
At night?
But it goes off at nine.
That's what I'm saying. No, after hours. That was a big draw, I know. So, all right. Well, I appreciate that. And the only other thing I have is, do we provide, and I see the library-at-home type of thing, are we providing online digital books through that also?
We are, and our use has gone up significantly. We invested with some help from the Humboldt Library Foundation, $10,000 last fiscal year, and I think 15 the year before, and we're asking again for $10,000 to support that. And also, you can get an e-account where you don't have to be in the library. You can register for an e-account online.
Do we provide the Kindles or whatever? I'm not trying to throw a name out there, but I mean, I know the devices have gotten pretty financially, you know, affordable.
Right.
Do we provide those, or?
We aren't currently providing those, but that's something that, you know, we could look at providing.
For those less fortunate, basically impaired, at home, you know, stay-at-homes, people that are under somebody's care. I mean, you'd have to set some limits, fully aware, but that may be something.
Absolutely. Another thing we've been looking at are Wi-Fi hotspots for checkout for rural locations where Wi-Fi access is a challenge.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I wanted to thank you for everything in the Garberville, through the Garberville branch. That was former Supervisor Estelle Fennels' project, recognizing that, and it's been really great for our community. The meeting room has been well-used. I'm there on Fridays, and the constituents really enjoy it. It's very warm and very good acoustics. Also, I am there on Wednesdays and Fridays, and I see a lot of people using the library, very thankful, and the buy-in from the community, especially the credit union for the furniture. It's a very nice upgrade to what was there previously. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work. COVID was not easy for library systems and everything else. And you guys really persevered, you know, and adapted, and did everything you could to kind of keep that access open. And I agree, it's been a wonderful thing that's happened in Garberville, Fortuna, Southern Humboldt. But, you know, equally, Trinity Valley is still struggling. I didn't see any mention up there about Willow Creek or Hoopa. Orleans Witchpeck, which is really the most remote corner of the county and not easy to serve. And I know you've worked hard to try and figure that one out, and staff have continued to keep open when they could. I was really hopeful for the Umpqua Bank purchase. If we had gotten that, we would have had a much finer library out there, but the price was too high, and we weren't able to acquire that. But I hope we're still looking at options in our facilities management plan and program, because Trinity Valley really deserves some better facilities. And you're still, you still have something, you're working with the tribe on Hoopa, is that correct? You still do have a library services there? Yeah. So anyway, I just want to make sure we keep Trinity Valley in mind, Trinity and the Clameth, really, when we can to make those improvements. But thank you for all your hard work, everybody there, so.
Okay, you're welcome. And we are working on some ADA improvements at the Willow Creek site, and also just some deferred maintenance and improving the lighting in the children's section. And we want to, you know, really spend some time to upgrade, you know, the facilities in that area. Thank you.
Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Wilson, you gonna have something? So I'll go to Bone first and then Wilson.
It's set up there that you got, you're getting internet. I'm still not getting internet in Ferndale, so.
Supervisor Wilson, for sure?
I'm just happy that the Arcata branch is still popular. That's really great. I mean, you know, it's like, we all go through phases, at least some of us, with regards to our local libraries when we're kids. I was in the Garberville Library quite a bit as a young person, and then having kids going through the Arcata one, and just, you know, interfacing with parents who are just really glad that that resource is back online again. And so, just appreciate it. Thanks.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, so I went from the Carnegie to the DA, to the downstairs here, and then so, used to live in the one down here, Carnegie, quite a bit, too, because it was close to the house. But this one here has moved quite a bit, when you think about it.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your ongoing support. All right.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon.
And next we have Planning and Building, Director Ford. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Bass, members of board. Good afternoon. John Ford with the Planning and Building Department. And I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay, Tracy. Thank you. So this is the Planning and Building Department's budget presentation for '22, '23. And I wanted to start just by saying, calling out the management units that exist within the department. This is something you may not have really paid attention to before. You'll notice that there has been a change from previous where there was a current planning unit. That team has really been split into two different units. We initially converted it into a front-counter team and then inspection team, post-approval monitoring. We ran into a situation where that span of control on that was really too large, so we split that into two teams. But the importance of this is that it does give us the ability to have a team that's responsive to the front counter, and then also a team that is following up on condition compliance, doing the smart inspection, and doing some really needed activities. In terms of the budget that we're proposing to you today, it's a $9.8 million budget. It's slightly down from last year, which was a $12 million budget. There are two reasons for the reduction in the budget. One is a reduction in permit fees that has gone down. The other is, in order to meet the 10% vacancy rate, two particular budget units within that have taken a particularly hard hit, and those are in red. 269 is the code enforcement unit. What's being proposed there is a $520,000 reduction. I'll address that more in a moment. And then also 277, which is really the administrative or the parent budget unit, is looking at a $414,000 reduction to that unit. So I'm just going to go through the units really quick. I know we're short for time, so I can't get into all this. The Administrative Services Unit really is the center of the hub, holds the building together, keeps everything moving forward. I want to call something out on this screen, which is that we probably don't often think about how much time it takes to do Public Records Act requests. But between July of 2021 and the end of March of 2022, our department has done 257 Public Records Act requests, been responsive to those. That's nearly a full-time job. And often, we don't get credit for that, but that is just constant work that is going on. And then, before going too far-
Supervisor Bushnell has a question for you.
Sure.
Director Ford, who does that work in your office?
It's one of the OAs, is the primary person doing that. Trip, Jeanne, sorry.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah. And so the other thing that I wanted to call out, and I, is that we also maintain the GIS system for the entire county. And then we've got a person doing our computer work, too. Both of them do a tremendous job. And before I get too far off this, our financial folks do an amazing job, too. I'll just say today, to give them a shout-out, they have been laboring since 7:30 this morning to get us in a place to make this presentation today and make it look rosy. And they've done a fantastic job. So I get to present a presentation that isn't as dire as it was, at least when I was looking at it over the weekend. So that's the Administrative Services, the front-counter administrative team. We created this team primarily because we want to do a couple of really important things. One is we want to have great public service, from the planning perspective. We need to free up people to be able to be responsive to the public at the counter, on the phones, and via email, and also to deal with the minor and ministerial-related permits. Rather than having those come in, go into the same process that discretionary project goes into, the idea is to keep it with the counter team so they can go in and out, in and out really quick. And they've approved over 200 building permit referrals, 110 ministerial projects. They've conducted 75 application assistance meetings and put 200 applications under referral. It's all good work. It's all good work. They are out of the budget unit 268 and 277. We're still working at getting a team together. And I just wanted to call out that it takes about 2.5 full-time equivalent planners per day to meet the public need. There's one person at the counter, there's one person doing email and phones, and then there's a backup. And the email and phones often take more than a day to get through. So then we come to discretionary permit team. This is both 277 and 278. Wanted to be really clear here that we continue to keep a separation between current planning and cannabis planning so the current planning projects are not lagging or being affected by the volume of cannabis planning. And to date in this year, we've used consultants. We've processed 216 cannabis projects to decision. 81 of those have been by consultants. We've processed 90 non-cannabis projects to decision. 37 were by consultants. And this year, we're looking to complete all the cannabis applications with an interim.
Supervisor Bone, looks like you has a question.
Sure.
Can you give me the reason? Is that just to tell you out of the 37 that there were 53 handled by the cultivator themselves and not a consultant?
No, that's staff.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, so 53 were by staff, 37 were by consultants.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Then we come to the permit team, which is the permit specialists. They primarily handle the building permit-related items. And also, they are typically the first people the public encounters when they walk into the building. They greet the people, they direct them to where they need to go. They really handle the traffic. And they've issued permits for 111 multifamily units, seven commercial processing buildings, a fire hall, an airport hangar, 111 single-family residences, 20 accessory dwelling units. That's a success, coming out of long-range planning, which has created a program to incentivize construction of accessory dwelling units. One junior accessory dwelling unit, and have issued 761 over-the-counter permits. A large percentage of those have to do with solar voltaic systems. So that's, that's good news on a couple of different fronts. The permit team this next year is going to be implementing a new program by which, when an application comes in over the counter, we're not going to accept anything that's incomplete. And that's going to cause some people to fuss. But the positive side of that is what we're going to do is immediately put applications under referral. Rather than giving it to a building inspector to go out and do a site visit, come back, send a letter to the applicant, have them fix that before it ever gets into referral. It's complete when it comes in, goes directly into referral. We believe that the new process will save probably four to six weeks in terms of processing time. And that's really important. We're continually moving towards digital application processing. And then also, we're working on the fact that we have not been hit by fire or natural disaster to date, and hopefully, we never are. But we want to have a process in place for permitting and response, responsive permitting, if we ever do. And so, we are working on mechanisms to make sure that's in place before it happens. Longer-term goals, the desire is to keep, is to place as much emphasis on keeping minor permits at the counter as possible. This involves expanding the reach and responsibilities of the permit specialists, and we want to increase that. Long-range planning, you're all familiar with development of ordinances and land use policies, but they also are responsible for implementing the housing development program and also administration of grants and loans, which often gets overlooked in this, this unit. They did accomplish quite a bit this year. They have a lot going on, from the Humboldt Bay Area Plan, regional sea level rise planning, McKinleyville Town Center, Climate Action Plan. Want to get billboard regulations done by the end of the year. Constantly focusing on meeting the state requirements for housing. And we need to undertake a multifamily rezone program within the next year. In building inspections, this is plan check inspections and also inspections of substandard housing. There's one thing I, they did an awful lot this year. You can see the numbers there, but perhaps the number that stands out the most is the 125 substandard housing inspections. When the Planning and Building Department took over the substandard housing program, it did not come with any additional staff, it did not come with any money. And they have been able to integrate this program into their normal work without increasing staff and without increasing the budget. Want to continue to provide great service. We have a code change coming in 2023, and we need to prepare for that. If we do reach 250 substandard housing inspections per year, we'll, we'll need to add to staff. Code enforcement, you recently saw the code enforcement report, so I don't need to spend a lot of time here. You've seen that we've closed more cases than we've opened. We developed a new process in terms of traditional enforcement. Going forward, we want to use the drug house ordinance to address some issues, explore receivership in order to deal with some of the more complicated projects. And then the emphasis this year is on stopping the night sky pollution. Then post-approval monitoring, this is monitoring both cannabis and non-cannabis. It also includes SMAR. One of the ways they do this is they identify sites using aerial imagery that need to be inspected, identify priority sites, then identify areas that they're going out to, and then inspect within an area. So when they go out, they do five to six inspections per day. Saves time, and then we currently have two teams. We've expanded the staff. We've got a senior planner and four planners working on two teams so that we're, they're highly organized. And I think they've already done 45 inspections within the last two weeks. So that's, that's a huge uptick. Some of the budget considerations I wanted to present to you today is, one is current economic conditions. We currently have about $900,000 in accounts receivable. Those are deposits that have not been paid by applicants. And about 130 of that is, or 130 additional dollars are currently in collections. There's $120,000 represented in current payment program. So we're at about $1.3 million in terms of money that's owed to the Planning and Building Department. The consequences of this is, first, for next year's budget, we're anticipating lower revenues, because we're just not getting paid. And a second corollary of that is that we're not doing work unless we have money on deposit. In terms of 262, the building inspection, there's no real budget issues there. That also includes the permit specialists. Terms of cannabis planning, there's not a big general fund issue there because it only receives $160,000 from the general fund. And that's really just to fund the front-counter interface. Reduction in revenue and fees really means that we need to correlate the number of staff to the amount of revenue that we're receiving. 277 is a little bit of a different story. We've, the proposed revenue reduction of $414,000. It's about a 23% reduction. What we can do is, is hold positions vacant. We currently have, I think, five, six planner positions that are vacant. One of the things that I would just present is that we could hold those positions vacant, but planners actually produce revenue. And so, when they're working, they're billing. And when they're billing, they're generating revenue. So it's not like we're just removing an expense. We're also removing somebody who produces revenue that not only pays for themselves, but pays the administrative cost of the department. And, and that is, the heavy overhead there is like the director who doesn't bill. Maybe he should, but. We then go to 269, which is code enforcement. The proposed budget reduction there is $520,000. That's really the equivalent of either the entire abatement budget or five positions. It's a 25, also a 25% reduction in general fund contribution. One of the things I wanted to bring up, and just in terms of the billing of code enforcement, is that if people receive a letter from us and they work with us to clean it up before we issue a notice to abate or a notice of violation, we do not charge them. Once they issue the NTA, once we issue the NTA NOV, then everything is billed. We found that for people who are right on the borderline of being able to clean things up or pay the county fees, we would rather have them clean it up than, than pay us. A little bit of good news is that the $400,000 that you recently granted the code enforcement unit to do additional abatements, it does not look like we're going to need that, primarily because the Green Valley Motel in Orec, I think there's the new property owner involved, and it looks like they're going to clean that up. And so, we're looking at getting the abatement money back and not spending the money that's allocated. So we could simply ask for that again as a part of next year's budget. 282, this is another sticky one. The funding comes through general plan user fee, general fund contribution, and grants. We probably are generating about $688,000 in grants and other sources of money. That gets us down to the general plan user fee and the general plan or general fund contribution, which comes out to be about $465,000. The priority projects we've got to complete this year are the Climate Action Plan, McKinleyville Town Center, Multifamily Rezone, Humboldt Bay Area Plan, the billboard ordinance and short-term rental ordinance. 465 can roughly fund four positions. That's a lot of work for four positions to complete. With consultant help, it can be done. One of the things that we're going to do, need to do with McKinleyville Town Center is we need to prepare an EIR. Estimated cost is $250,000. The multifamily rezone needs an EIR, and that's, that's a necessity coming out of the settlement agreement on the housing element, which said that if we don't adopt a traffic mitigation fee for the Martin Slough interceptor, that we will go back and redo zoning to provide multifamily units to replace the multifamily units that we claimed within the Martin Slough interceptor area. And then there's the environmental work that's needed for the Humboldt Bay Area Plan.
Supervisor Bushnell has a question.
Could you go back one slide? So the, thank you. The McKinleyville Town Center EIR and the multifamily rezone EIR, is that paid by the county?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Then, the last thing I, I'm going to bring up today, and forgive me if this is inappropriate, but is, is staff pay. We do appreciate the pay increase, but it is not helping with planner retention. We recently had six vacancies for planners. We recruited, we were able to fill three. During that period of time, we had another one resign. The one that resigned was looking for another job as a way to say, "Hey, I've got this other job offer, will you give me a promotion to planner two?" Well, as it turns out, the other job offer that they got was better than the planner two position, and so they resigned. So now we've got four vacancies there. We also recently had two senior planners, one retired, one resigned. We already had three senior planner vacancies. We did a recruitment for senior planner, which was consistent with past experience. We got two responses. One was an internal response, the other one was from a jurisdiction down south. Lots of experience, looked really good on paper, but has not responded at all to the invitation for an interview. So we're, we're struggling. We have staff that stays here for about 12 to 16 months. Once they get sufficient experience to look good on paper, they can go someplace else and earn half again or twice as much as they are in similar positions elsewhere. And, and the constant turnover, the constant retraining of staff, maybe that is a reality that, that we will have to face. But it is, at some point, it is counterproductive to constantly be retraining. Be happy to answer any questions. And just wanted to thank you for your support for the department and all that we endeavor to do.
I have Supervisor Wilson, and then Bone, and then Madron.
With regards to the retention issue, and I know some people don't like this subject, but the idea of farming some of that out in terms of, I'm just wondering, like, if those conversations occur? Because, I mean, we can, I assume we'd be able to direct bill for that at cost as opposed to, and then that's, it just is what it is, it costs what it costs. Is that, is that something we've been considering? Or is that something we can do?
We could do that for long-range planning. And that is something we do in current planning and cannabis planning currently. And, and the work gets done. I mean, that's why I showed that. We've been pretty successful. 40% of our current planning and cannabis planning work is done by consultants right now.
And I mean, because if we did it in-house, even though it might be cost less, we just can't retain the people to do it at that, at those rates? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, one of the things that we're struggling with is having enough experienced, really experienced people to work on some of these more complicated projects. So at that level, getting a consultant that has a high degree of experience to come in and work with you and help you looks very desirable.
Okay, thanks.
And Supervisor Bone, then Madron, then Bushnell.
And that helps move projects along. Two things, John. At the beginning, you mentioned the admin team that were our collectibles or our accounts receivables were all brought up to date. And then later on, it said we were $465,000 past due. Was that right, or did I misinterpret that?
No, those go together. So we've done a very good job of putting out billing for all projects. We're all, we're current on all things. What that has left us with, though, is $900,000 in accounts receivable, where people have not paid us.
So we're not current, then?
We're not current.
Okay, all right, that's.
We're current in our billing, not current in our collections.
Okay, I misunderstood. And then the only, the last thing is, would it help if we up here changed the ordinance or did something when it comes to code enforcement? So there's more teeth, so we, you know, so we don't have two, three, four, five years of your time. Some of these places that I've got, you've visited over 20 times. And that's got to be manners. You should be able to visit it twice and know that you're in a crap hole and it needs to be fixed, and not have to go back and go back and go back. Is there something we can do in the ordinance just says, "Okay, if it's this bad, it's this bad. We're, you've got 30 days to clean it up, or we're going to take it over" so we don't have repeated visits and everything?
I think that's a great question, and that's where there is some subjective discretionary decision-making. And our approach is to try to work with people. Five years is too long, obviously. But we do try to give people every opportunity to bring the site into compliance before we resort to the actual abatement by the county.
But, but what I'm saying is, is you've got to look at this, because we have multiple sites where you have over 20 visits. You have multiple sites where the offending party becomes personal friends with, they have so much contact. They talk about how well they work together. "I haven't cleaned anything up, but we're sure working well together." And at the same time, all the neighbors have to deal with this blight, this constant blight, and want to know what's going on. And I'm just saying, is there a way we can clean this up quicker? Because I think somewhere in your ordinance, there's a, there's a big illegal trash dump seminar coming up.
Supervisor Bone, it's a management, it's a management issue, and I will deal with that. That is on me. We, we will just become a little bit more assertive and a little bit less friendly.
Thank you.
All right, so before I go to Supervisor Madron, then Bushnell, Tracy, you're, apparently you're still sharing your screen. We can't tell here.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right. All right, so as soon as, yeah, because I couldn't tell. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you. Yeah, quarter million dollars for an EIR, I get it. Looks like a big amount of money for the McKinleyville Town Center ordinance. But it's similar to the In-N-Out burger, when the city of Eureka said, "Well, we're going to spend $400,000 on a stoplight." And they figured they'd make that back in several years. on a stoplight, and they figured they'd make that back in several years in revenues, in terms of sales tax, property values. Same thing's true here. I mean, the county made a commitment back in 2001 when they completed the McKinleyville Community Plan to do a town center ordinance, and it is going to be a major economic revitalization for McKinleyville that will lead to increased housing. There's a significant, it was two, 300 units proposed in the town center, along with significant retail development and a town center concept with open space and pedestrian and bicycle-friendly environment, that the owner, Ann Pearson, has had this dream forever of taking her property and really creating a really beautiful town center for McKinleyville that isn't there right now. It's really just Main Street, chain stores, et cetera. So she's had this vision. We've been working to complete the ordinance, which was, you know, something that was in the community plan, as I said, and literally, this will, this money will be paid back over and over again to the county in terms of increased sales tax, increased property values, more housing to read, meet our arena numbers and things like that. Is that, is that true from your perspective?
Well, I think the town center does take the heart of McKinleyville and make it something that has development potential, whereas at the current time, it does not.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you, through the chair. I wanted to ask about when we sub stuff out. Are the rates current for, are they current with our rates that we charge when we sub stuff out?
It varies. Some of the consultants are very similar to our rates, some are slightly above.
So is there a firm that we use that's more comparable to our own compare? The reason I'm asking is I get questions from constituents that did some planning with in-house planners, and they get, then they get switched or a planner quits, and so, or get switched, and then they go to outside agency, and the price seems to vary quite a bit, and so that's why I would like to ask you.
So one of the things we're struggling with internally is the amount of time that our internal planners bill. And the last report that I got, it's on my desk right now, the average billing time was 50%.
Your planners are only charging their 50% of their time?
I, I'm afraid so. And so if there's a difference, I'm afraid if there's a difference between what the consultants bill and what our planners bill, it's because the consultants bill their time.
Well, actually, it's a price per hour, so.
But they may work faster.
The in-house or out, or consultants?
Outside.
So you're talking about the overall number may be the same?
Yep.
Because they work, the outside consultants work faster?
They're more experienced planners. That's largely why we hired them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any, Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I was just add to that, just by the construct of working within these, this kind of institution, your overhead training, overhead, overhead time is just so, it's different than the private sector. It just is, for good or for bad. I mean, you know, there's, there's positives to that, and there's, there's issues with that, and I, I recognize that it's not necessarily the, the experience in terms of like the billing, these percent billing. I mean, just to have an expectation that we would match the private sector in that percentage is, I think, we'll never get there, and neither will any public sector agency. But nonetheless, you are trying to move in that direction for sure to get, get that efficiency, but yeah.
Yes, thank, thank you for recognizing that. Yes, we are.
Any other questions? All right, Ian, thank you. And before we move on to the next, I have had a request for a 15-minute break, so yes, someone requested 15 minutes. We're going pretty fast so far, so we'll come back in 15 minutes. In the general vicinity, so, welcome, Luke. We'll do the, oh, I'm trying to get the, you're up here, yeah, welcome. I still really enjoyed your wife inviting us, by the way, to read at Lafayette. That was one of the best meetings, if you wanted to call it a meeting, you could possibly do, so.
Thank you, I'm Luke Brownfield.
You put on your mic.
Yeah, I just spoke, you just have to.
Ah, there we go. Luke Brownfield, Public Defender. Thank you, Chair, thank you, Board.
Sorry, we're trying to get things straightened up here. Okay, so we know, Public Defender and Luke, good, we're good.
All right, Public Defender services Humboldt County individuals who are charged with a criminal offense and can't afford to pay for their own attorneys. We typically, in each given year, get about 6,000 criminal complaints. Additional to criminal complaints, we do some quasi-criminal conservatorships, juvenile and contempt cases as well. To cover all of those things, we have two offices. One is Conflict Council, one is the main office. We have 16 attorneys working for us, five investigators, about 13 additional staff, and newly, we have added a social worker for each office. We got grant funding for the social worker in each office, and that has been amazingly successful. We are kind of changing the way we are operating. We're always going to be an office that if you're charged with a crime, we're going to give you the best defense possible, but now we're becoming a little more proactive. We are trying to keep people out of the justice system altogether, instead of just trying to help them through it, and utilizing our social worker has been very successful, especially here in Humboldt County with so many people with issues of mental health or just getting the services that they need. We've utilized our, our social workers to get them, to try and prevent them from being in the criminal justice system altogether. We call it a more holistic approach, instead of just working against what the charges the DA brought against them. We try and work sometimes with the DA even, in trying to keep people just out of the criminal justice system. Additionally, we've, Public Defenders worked with the DA in getting a grant for Humboldt County. We're a part of a pilot program, one of nine counties in the state, that is, looking at the prison populations of their counties, seeing people who have been sentenced to very lengthy prison sentence, who might be eligible to get out early, and Ms. Fleming and I, DA Fleming, and I have gotten a list of people who are in those prisons, are going through them, to see who would be eligible to be released, and in looking at the list, there's five or six that I think likely will be released, released years early than they otherwise would have been. As far as budget, we operate, operated last year on about a $5.2 million budget, not including any of the grant funding. Our budget coming up, I don't see major changes, other than the wages increase, which I would like to thank the Board for approving that. It does two things. It will make recruiting much easier, but I think more importantly, for the staff that we have kept, working through the last two years pandemic, shows them that they're valued, that their services are needed, especially in the Public Defender's Office. We are often, we don't often work with clients that are easy to work with. It's sometimes a very thankless job. The staff that I have at both offices are tremendous, and getting that raise is extremely important to show that the county values them, so I do thank you for that. Concerns as we go forward, obviously recruitment's very difficult. I'm sure you've heard it from every department. Recruiting is hard, especially for senior attorneys in Humboldt County. It's easier to get misdemeanor attorneys, but when you're talking about people who have experience, it is very difficult to get people up here. I do think that the wage increase is going to help that. I also, the way that criminal justice works in Humboldt County, misdemeanor attorneys move up faster than any other county in the state, just because we see more cases, we do more, more work than most other counties. As far as funding, as I said, the only real increases that I believe we'll see will be from the wages and the benefits, as well as insurance costs. Other than that, my plan going forward is to continue the holistic approach, try and get more social workers involved, because I think that keeps cases out of the court system, which I think is the most important thing for Humboldt County, make us safer. Yeah, so if you have any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for those monthly.
Oh, yeah.
Updates you give.
Yeah, those are great.
Kind of have to say, like, you just basically updated your monthly updates.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much that, and I'm going to continue to do those monthly updates. I'm also working on including Conflict Council. It's difficult for me to run the numbers because we have conflict, but I've been working with Conflict Council on how to, it's the name, yeah. So we have some ethical barriers that we have to deal with, but thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, and next we have Public Works and Director Mattson.
Good afternoon, Chair, Bass, members of the Board. Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works for Humboldt County. Do we have a? I take it this thing's not working? An engineer without his PowerPoint is not much of an engineer.
Well, it looks like you're in luck.
There we go, thank you.
You know, in Germany, they had an anti-PowerPoint party, like.
I wouldn't doubt it.
A political party, so there you go.
I like the pencil and paper party. So Public Works has six divisions: engineering, facilities management, general services, land use, environmental services, and road maintenance and fleet services. In total, we have about 200 employees. We are in the final stage of an interview for a full-time Solid Ways person, so hopefully that will get us moving. We will talk a little bit about Senate Bill 1383 today and then follow up in the next couple of months. So with the engineering division, this is the one that does the designs for all of our projects, manages all the outside contractors, manages the construction. You can just go scroll through. Our number one priority right now is getting storm damage approval and moving. We are having extreme difficulties, to say the least, with FEMA right now, just like every other county, not only in the state of California, but this is a nationwide issue with arbitrary, we feel arbitrary and capricious denials of projects. We have two major projects, one on Monument Road and one on Shively Road, that they are trying to deny, and so we are fighting those. Of course, we have our ADA curb ramps. We may have to push out some construction on those until the following year, simply due to the fact that we're running out of money, because we're having to use all of our money to match storm damage projects. Here, you can see a couple that we've completed recently on the Matoll Road. Redwood House Road, a culvert replacement that we were, we completed. Aldo Point Road has a number of sites that we've worked on. Environmental Services Division, this is which does our permitting, does our Parks Division. Again, I'll repeat what the other directors said, that we greatly appreciate the raises, especially at the lower tier end of the, of the county employment. That has gone a long way to, to help our people decide to stay with us, but with that, that means a cut in, in funding with not knowing where our funding is. So our number one priority is maintain what we have right now. So they do permitting. We have the, the Matoll River Bridge, the Honeydew Bridge, that's been in the process for many, 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 many years, trying to wrap up the permitting on that so we can go to construction. You can see the Shelter Cove storm damage site from 2017 before construction. They did the permitting on that. Pine Hill Bridge is going through a replacement project. We also are the grant administrator for the North Coast Resource Partnership, and we are the leadership and coordination of hazard planning for the fire safe councils, and that is going to be a huge component in the following years. They're also responsible for levy operation and maintenance. An example here is the Blue Lake Levy on the Mad River. Water resource studies and planning around Humboldt Bay sea level rise, looking at that, how it's going to affect not only our facilities, but all public facilities. We're involved in the groundwater sustainability planning for the Eel River Valley, the water management planning for Humboldt County's Trinity River, which we're hoping will start in 2223, and the Potter Valley Project on the Upper Eel River, decommissioning and regional water planning to make sure that Humboldt gets its fair shake. We do two majors, or three stormwater programs, MS4 stormwater programs as required by the regional water board, and population density for McKinleyville, the unincorporated Eureka area, and the area of significant biological significance off of Shelter Cove. We have 16 different county parks spread throughout the county, and we just, as you probably heard, got our first earmark in, that came to the county, probably 20 years for replacement of the Hammond Bridge, which will provide a significant chunk of the, the cost to replace that structure. We're developing the McKay Community Forest. We're hoping to try to open up the parking lot this summer so people can really start accessing it. We've got the project development for the Humboldt Bay Trail, which last Thursday, thank you Coastal Commission for approving our permit for that, so we can move that forward, and we're already starting to look at the future project south of the city from the end of Eureka to CR. They do the, the monitoring and required reporting for our redway transfer station, and we do all of the monitoring at the closed Table Bluff landfill in Lolita. Facilities management, we will be doing a budget enhancement request for this division, mainly to try to replace a lot of our old and ancient equipment that they use to keep the facilities up. Our level of staffing, we are going through a staffing analysis. We have tons of projects backed up, but not enough people to deliver them, even using outside consultants. We know this is not a good year to try to institute something, but we are working on the planning for the future, so when, when the budget comes around, we're ready to enhance our staffing in order to bring all of these projects to county outstanding onto the ground. So, you know, aging infrastructure, building envelope failures. This is our lovely Clark complex, corroded concrete reinforcement, just old structures. There are good things. The completed Fortuna Veterans Hall Lounge came out really well, working closely with the veterans. I think they were really able to express what they needed, and we, they got a lot of donations to help with materials, and we were able to deliver that project. We have our General Services Division. Level of administrative support, it never goes down. I do need to take a second here and thank the CAO's office for over the weekend, for we're trying to put our budget together, and Tabitha was working Sunday and helping my people out getting things as everybody's cramming for the budget, but it's an all-hands-on-deck with all of the billings we have to do to get our reimbursements, trying to keep all of our funding plans and everything online, on point. Solid waste, I'm going to talk a few minutes about this, but you will hear much more about this in, in the coming months. The dashed areas you see are all of our franchise areas. One of the issues we're having is our census. One of the issues we're having is our census tract areas that are exempt from SB 1383, don't follow our franchise areas. So we have exempt areas inside our franchise areas, and we have required areas outside of our franchise areas. And so we're going to need to do some work with our franchise haulers to adjust boundaries. We're going to need your direction on whether you want those boundaries adjusted, how you want collection handled, how do you want to institute the organics collection under 1383. We have been making pretty good progress. We are developing a compliance plan in accordance with AB 619, which gave us a year. We're working, we have a joint contract between all of the cities, the county and HWMA, with a consultant that's developing that plan for all the cities and the county, as well as working on some of the low-hanging fruits, such as diverting food to edible pantries and looking at things like, can we take our edible food that we can't distribute and make it into MREs for emergency stockpiles or other things? So there's a lot of unique things out there that I hadn't thought of before that we're now looking at. Next. Quick overview, because you left an hour and a half on the table, and I'm here to consume it. No, not seriously. So AB 1826 required businesses to arrange for organics collection services based on amount of waste generated, and that has been in effect for quite a while. You know, going back to AB 939, where we generally finally started recognizing that our solid waste isn't all just solid waste, there's a lot of things that get thrown away that don't need to be thrown away, that could be recyclable. But SB 1383 is a game changer, because it establishes targets to achieve a 75% reduction in landfill organic waste by 2025. And why is that important? Because landfill organic waste is one of the largest greenhouse generators of methane, and getting that material into productive use instead of just releasing methane into the atmosphere is a big part of both the state and the national plan. But I do note that that 75, unlike AB 1939, which had a specific goal for each and every entity, the 75% is statewide. So we may not get to 75%, or we may do better than 75%. We don't know at this point, but that is not a mandate on Humboldt County, it's just a mandate that we must begin the process and start providing the services that allow for the diversion of the landfill organic waste. So the six jurisdictional responsibilities that we are responsible for are providing organics collection, establishing edible food recovery program. We have a number of those already in the county. We've already been interviewing all of them to address what their capacity is, if they have plans to grow, what they would need to grow, because as part of this, we can actually try to get funding that's out there from the state to these groups to enhance their operations, things like additional cold storage trucks, larger warehouses, et cetera. Education and outreach is going to be important. We have a procurement requirement. We believe the county may already be in compliance with that, but that's a difficult one because of the way the rules are written, but reading our procurement policy, we may be there or very close there under that requirement. Secure access to recycling and edible food recovery capacity, that's again, working with all of our local food banks and finding out what else can we do. And then there is a monitor enforcement and conduct enforcement component, and we are meeting with environmental health and code enforcement in the upcoming weeks to talk about what needs to be done there, because in most counties, it's either with environmental health or with code enforcement, and our solid waste enforcement currently is with environmental health, but certainly they're going to need to enhance the program, because this is going to be a big, big add-on. We have key implementation dates. The January 1st, 2022 date actually got pushed out by a year, as long as we are making good faith compliance, and we believe we are doing that. We are working very closely with CalRecycle staff and showing them everything we're doing, and we did make the big step of going regional with this and joining, even the cities that don't have to do this for five years have joined us in the early stage so that they can take the benefit of working together and the efficiencies of all of us doing it together rather than doing it apart. 2024 regulations require us to start taking enforcement, so it's going to be an active, very active year, two years, and as with everything else, there are a lot of supply chains issues that may affect when we can actually move forward, if we have to provide extra bins, extra trucks. There's extra time right now, we're looking at an 18-month timeline for bins, and that puts us way out there, but those are all valid reasons for the state to grant extensions. There are some that are not valid, and I'll get to those in a second. So it can either be a three-container source-separated collection, that's where you have one for the recycling, one for the solid waste, and one for organics, including green waste. Two-container, you can have segregated organic waste and everything else, but we don't have a MRF, so that one doesn't work for us. Really need a materials recovery facility to put everything, including the recyclables, back in with your garbage and then have it sorted out later. And then the one container is really the MRF, Material Recovery Facility, because everything goes into one container, you're back to square one of throwing everything away and then having to sort it out at the facility. So we're probably going to end up with either, probably a three-container kind of operation is what we are thinking at this point, but this will all come back to you, with one for garbage, one for recyclables, and one for organics, including green waste as well as food.
Supervisor Bone?
So the green waste and the liquid, or the food waste, anything else, will all go into one, and then?
That is an option. There's different ways of doing that. Some include putting it in a, basically a pail within the bin, bags within the bin, or just totally mixed within the bin. It really depends on the receiving facility and what they can handle. Right now, there is nothing in Humboldt County that can handle this.
No, and my problem is, it's been 10 years, we haven't even taught people not to put in their pizza boxes into the recycling. I see it every day, so I...
Yeah, it's a tough issue to institute new regulations by the state when we don't even have a CRV facility in Humboldt County. This is a tough one to bite off, but it is a mandate, and we need to make progress on it, or we're going to start facing stiff fines, and I would rather make progress than develop a fine. So we will be developing an ordinance to bring forward to your board within the next couple of months. We do need to try to get it final adoption before June 15th. That's where you will have a lot of the input and options of what you want to see in your franchise areas. Next couple of years, start developing compliance reviews, route reviews, inspections, educate violators, and then getting into the annual compliance reviews, route reviews, inspections, notice of violations, penalties for violators. We haven't really gone as far as penalties for violators to date. Most of this has come through our franchisers as they go through their recycling bins, and they notice, you know, oopsies, notices, et cetera, letting people know they're putting things in their bin they shouldn't be, or frankly, you know, one of the things that we need to consider in our ordinances is people are violating what is supposed to go in the bin, just charging them the full service rate for that bin until they submit So we will need to do this by the 20, it used to be 2022, but now it's 2023, and it can be extended, like I say, with good faith, actions on behalf of the county and all the cities, and we are all basically in the same boat together and working together. So we need to amend the franchise agreement to include provisions for SB 1383. We need to adopt an ordinance for organics collection. We need to identify our food waste processing option. Initially, that's probably going to be through an RFP to the areas outside the county, while we work internally to see what we can build within the county, what we can absorb in our wastewater facility, anaerobic digesters, hire additional staff to assist with the implementation and outreach, and approve rate adjustments to include those costs.
Supervisor Bone?
Are you, the additional staff, are you talking about Public Works hiring additional staff? Or are we going to put this on Recology and put this into the rate? And since it's in their house, it's going to be in their house to manage. It's burdened on us, but it's going to be in their house to manage. Wouldn't it be better, would it be better for their employees to...
The county is required to do the enforcement. While they can help with enforcement, I'm hiring a person simply to move this all forward and take care of all of our solid waste issues through existing funding. But I have yet to meet with environmental health or code enforcement to see what their needs are going to be. And yes, we have been talking to Recology about what they can do on their side, and they've got some pretty good options that they're putting forward for us to consider. But yes, everything costs money. They do all of our project financing. This is a Safe Routes to School project of financing through the state. You've got just a lot of detail you have to provide. They do all the financing for transit. I do need to note that we have lost the eastern transit with KTNet with COVID, but we are working very closely and getting very close to an agreement with the UroC tribe to take over all of the routes that were lost when KTNet went out of business, basically. We do all the fuel cards for all the county employees come through Public Works. So our land use division, they're the ones that permit all the encroachments and everything on our roads. You know, moving projects forward is, you know, one of the things that John Ford said about moving things forward quicker, and that's always a priority, is getting things through our office and permitted as quickly as we can possibly get them so the private sector can go to work. We do building permit referrals. It's been pretty consistent, even through COVID, going up a little bit each year. We are, you know, looking at cow polly, fish harm, wind. We expect that we'll be getting certain demand increases under building permits as these facilities roll out and the population of Humboldt County increases. We do encroachment permits, that means wherever anybody wants to work on a county road, whether it be a pipe, infrastructure, cable, beam, you name it, there's a lot of things that go under our roads that we facilitate through encroachment permits and driveways that attach to our roads. And that has been very, very consistent over time. Again, as the community builds out with all these new things coming, we do expect that to grow. We do transportation and special permits, so oversized loads, parades, running events, anything that anybody wants to do on a road that's not legal inside the current street and highways codes, then we do a special permit for. We get planning referrals on all kinds of different projects that relate to roads. You can see we had a big jump in 2019 with cannabis jumping, and it's been consistent ever since then. We get a lot of complaints, and this is just only our number-one complaint, somebody built a fence in the right-of-way, and they're blocking visibility, which creates not only a safety issue, but they blocked off our pipes for our maintenance crews to be able to clean the pipes. And then we go back to the property owners, and they get very, very upset that they just built a fence, and now they have to tear it down. But you need to know, when you build a fence, have your survey done first. We do right-of-way work requests, so that's survey detailed information, going back to the beginning of how things were laid out in Humboldt County, and that's been steadily, but, you know, small but steady increasing over the years. We get survey work requests, that's primarily in-house from our engineering department. So all of our storm, like our storm damage, they will go out and do a number of the surveys. We keep a steady crew, and then we have an on-call consultant that does the overload work. Maps checking and legal description review, mostly for private parcel development that comes to the county, and that, again, has been very consistent. And last but not least, our biggest division, Road Maintenance and Fleet Services. The biggest issue is Tier 4 final compliance for our heavy equipment. This is going to be very expensive. We are leading an effort to get all public agencies together to talk about regional hydrogen and EV facilities throughout the county so that we can build out for everybody in a consistent manner, efficiently, and not have every agency building their own and having, you know, two or three competing facilities that can serve two or three government agencies, say in Willow Creek, where you could have one hydrogen facility that could serve Cal Transit County and the Forest Service. So we're trying to get that going, but we have millions and millions of dollars in equipment replacements that we will be needing to do over the following years. Typical road maintenance activity, edge of the road falls out, tobacco in a dump truck out there, fill it up with rock. Requests for service, 2019, 2261, 2020, went down a little bit at 1600, and we started climbing in about 2021. These are your calls for potholes, for roadside vegetation, mowing, when are you going to overlay my road, can I hit a tree limb, all of those kind of things. Those are the service requests that go to our crews, and they go out and try to take care of with the best of their ability. Our biggest preventative maintenance technique is slurry and chip seals, they're the most cost-effective for the county to do before the road really deteriorates. We've had to get into the homeless encampment business and been doing a lot of cleanup. Fire on the Eel River bar, their trailer there, just all over the county. We're getting things in the county public right-of-way or on county parks that need to be cleaned up, and we work with some outside consultants, John Shelter, et cetera, that really help with us. And it's just an ongoing and increasing issue. We do our own rock crushing. This year, we will be lease purchasing a new rock crusher that will be much more efficient than our old crusher, will increase our production and keep our costs very, very low. Tree removal, anybody remember Willow Creek this winter? This is after the snow melted, out there with the tree crews, our crews at all hands, trying to get this community cleaned up for this summer's fire season. More of the Willow Creek storm areas, you can see that's a county road on the left. Can't get to the road with all of those trees on it. Just, it was a major, major issue up in Willow Creek this winter. The new Tier 4 equipment is coming, so we've got to be ready, and we've got to make the investments to keep ourselves legal. We got the electric vehicle transmission transition I talked just a little bit about, but again, that's something that we need to be ready for county-wide. We have heavy equipment transition, that's our Tier 4, all of the heavy equipment, that's all going to have to be converted over to hydrogen fuel. They do not have electric vehicles that do what heavy equipment can do, and similar to HTA, we are going to have to be in the hydrogen fuel business. And with that, just an overview of what we do, what we're looking forward to this year, and we're open to any questions you might have.
Supervisor Madron?
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate all the hard work you guys do with limited resources these days, and the job's not getting any easier, that's for sure. Has the wage increase helped at all?
I have yet to see. I'm hearing from my people that they're very grateful, but there are a lot of equity adjustments that still need to be done, you know, but everybody is very, very grateful of what they got so far, and they are very, very patient to working towards future adjustments, so.
Great.
I haven't lost anybody that I know of since you made the raises, and frankly, over the last few years, I've lost a lot of people in my engineering and my road maintenance departments.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, Hambro's open in Arcata, I believe, so that's the good news. We do have CRV recycling back in Humboldt County, as I understand it. They opened up a week or so ago.
Didn't hear that, I thought they were out till March.
They've got crowds there, but they're working through it. They've got extra staff on board for the first several weeks to deal with the backlog. I mean, most of us have, what, four or five barrels or whatever?
Slightly, I've got a garage full of aluminum.
So that's the good news there. And as you know, at Humboldt Waste Management Authority, we're talking a lot about the organic waste bill and what to do about that, and so we'll be working hand-in-hand with you, I know, to get that together as well as this board. as this board. You know, some of the things that have come up are, one, there are a lot of people who are already compost, they're organic waste, and we don't want to create a law that penalizes people that are already doing probably the number one best thing, which is take care of it yourself and not put it in your garbage, right? Because once it goes in there, whether you got three can, two can, one, it's a whole lot more expensive to handle and deal with than individuals taking care of it. And there's certainly, you know, educational effort that needs to happen to teach people how to do it, to not have varmints and other kinds of problems, et cetera. But I get, you know, about 102 cubic bags of soil out of my compost system every year and it's very valuable soil. Also, a lot of talk about how we want to also make sure that the small collectors, you know, there's a number of people like the worm guy and other people that are going around and collecting from businesses. So at HWMA, we're talking about how do we create a tiered system where if you're doing it at home, no fee? And if there are other people locally that have businesses that are collecting it, that's great. Ultimately, there'll be a whole lot that's not going to fit into that. And so the idea of taking the fish waste from Nordic and mixing them together and creating a value-added fertilizer product, rather than shipping our organic waste out raw somewhere else that has a, what do you call them, a MRF or other kinds of things, doing it locally and mixing the fish waste together and having an export product value added. So those are just some of the things that have come up at our meetings recently and I know you're aware of all of that. So really, I share that with the board. Little report from Humboldt Waste Management Authority.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Hi, thank you for the detailed report, Tom. I just want to thank you and your staff coming in as a new supervisor and having a very rural area down there. You guys have been very helpful to me and have communicated well to me and I appreciate that. The updates I get from Testsea, I think, is very helpful. It says what's going to happen throughout the month and that's great. And then my, you know, I meet with your staff, Steve, once a week and that's very helpful. So I just appreciate all the efforts that you guys do. And there's a lot more to Public Works than people realize. It's a big department.
We make the Public Works.
You do.
If it works, you don't know about us. If it doesn't work, you're calling us.
Yeah, I do want to say that I hope that the raises helped. I'm not getting as many calls about retention, so I think that they're at least, you know, feeling the improvement and that's always helpful, but then we also have inflation going on, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I wanted to thank you for how responsive your whole team is. And you're right, there's everything you get sent. It's like, why is this happening? Why is this happening? Can you help me here? Who does this? And you guys always get back in a really quick fashion.
Yeah, it's really a lot of good staff.
Yeah, it's not that you can always give me the, you know, some of the answers aren't maybe what I want, but I appreciate them. And I don't see any other questions, so.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. We've got the Treasury Tax Collector. Welcome back, Amy.
Hello, everyone. I'm Amy Christensen, the Assistant Treasury Tax Collector. The Treasury Tax Collector's Department collects deposits, invests and safeguards money for the county, school districts, College of the Redwoods and most of the special districts in Humboldt County. We have three budget units in our department, Treasury, Tax Collector and Revenue Recovery. So I'm going to go over a brief overview of each of those for you. I'll start with the Treasury Budget Unit. The Treasury Expense Budget Unit represents all costs for banking transactions, investment management and custodial service expenses for treasury pool investments. Investments are managed for safety, liquidity and yield in accordance with Government Codes 53601 and 53635. All treasury costs are fully reimbursed to the general fund. Treasury staff manage all banking and investment activities, analyze cash flow trends to ensure daily liquidity needs are met across all agencies in the investment pool. We apportion interest to pool participants and semi-annually make 65 different school bond debt service payments. In addition, treasury staff collaborate with the Planning and Building Department to bill and collect Measure S excise taxes. County treasury banking transactions now average $5 million per day and the treasury pool can fluctuate between $400 and $530 million throughout the year depending on cash flow requirements. Our next budget unit is Tax Collections. The Tax Collector Budget includes all costs for collections for taxing agencies, including the county, cities, school districts and various special districts. 68,000 secured property tax bills are printed and mailed, which currently brings in $176 million annually. We're collecting the second installment, last day to pay, it's today, big line out the door, yep. And then there's 13,000 unsecured property tax bills printed and mailed for an average of $7 million annually collected. This budget unit also covers costs for the collection of transient occupancy taxes and the administration and renewals for over 3,200 business licenses each year. Key changes for personnel in fiscal year 22, 23 in the department are the de-allocation of one treasury tax assistant, the supervising treasurer and the administrative services officer positions, and the allocation of a second assistant treasury tax collector. Tax collections and treasury operations each require a unique set of knowledge and training to fulfill departmental responsibilities. So for long-term planning and stability within the department, two assistant treasury tax collectors is warranted. There are no increased costs to the general fund for this change. With these changes, the treasury and tax divisions will have eight full-time employees and one extra help staff member. And the final budget unit we have is Revenue Recovery. The Revenue Recovery Budget represents costs to fulfill the comprehensive collection agreement with the Superior Court to collect delinquent court ordered debt per Penal Code Section 1463.007 and 1463.010. In fiscal year 2020, 2021, Revenue Recovery was able to contribute $157,000 to the general fund and projections for fiscal year 21, 22 are on pace to contribute close to that amount again. The recently effective Assembly Bills, 1869 and 177 repealed the authority to collect many court imposed costs and fees, but the state is providing backfill revenue to counties to cover those losses through fiscal year 25, 26. In addition, the Superior Court now retains delinquent collections for most of their misdemeanor cases since October 2019, so collections have become more challenging. Those changes caused us to reduce staffing in the division from nine to three full-time employees over the last three years, which has also been very challenging. But the remaining team is solid and very competent. Revenue Recovery also operates with a DOS-based program called Cubs that is being sunset by the vendor at the end of calendar year 2023. So Revenue Recovery must transition to the vendor's new RevQ software by that time. And there are still many unknowns in the timing and pricing, but we're actively working it out. These challenges for Revenue Recovery necessitate allocation changes for fiscal year 22, 23, namely the de-allocation of one full-time Revenue Recovery Officer, two, and the reallocation of a program coordinator. The program coordinator will be responsible for managing the software transition, posting monthly revenue distribution reports and preparing the annual CRT report to the Judicial Council of California. With these changes, the Revenue Recovery Division will still have the three positions, program coordinator, one senior Revenue Recovery Officer and one permanent part-time employee. And that includes or concludes my prepared remarks.
Any questions? Supervisor Bone?
Are you ready for this?
I'm ready.
Good girl. Thank you. Thanks for stepping up.
Yeah, happy to. Excited for the challenge and very honored. I will.
Supervisor Madron?
A question asked everybody else, how staffing and the wage increases?
Well, we have four vacant positions. When John retires, there will be five of us in the department. So we are all grateful, but it has been challenging recruiting. So we're running a continuous recruitment right now. We get applicants every Wednesday, but so far, not much, but we're hopeful.
Great, thank you.
All right, looks like the questions are darn titty.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so lastly, we have the budget update from our CAO.
Thank you, Chair Bass. There is nothing to update on here. We put it on there just in case there would be something that we needed to discuss with you following all of the departmental presentations, but we are good to conclude the meeting at this point.
Yeah, that's the next part. We have, then we'll go to public comment on today and there's no members of the public that have been on with us. So anyone have any last parting remarks? Supervisor Madron?
You know, we're seeing a consistent output of departments and even special districts who have lost funds due to late closing of books or in the case of the Humboldt Bay Water District, other expenses due to COVID, et cetera. And so a lot of folks are asking for help out of the general fund. I would love to see over the last three or four years, what have all the hits to the general fund been, you know, that were outside the budget process? I think that would be an informative piece of information to understand that. And maybe it will help us figure out ways to try and avoid some of that in the future. Of course, a lot of it is unavoidable, the stuff you don't predict because it would be in the budget if it was. But I just would like to see that. I think it would be informative.
You're asking for a report out for, I don't know how many years you're looking for, but all of the general fund allocations that were approved outside of the normal budgetary requesting process?
That's correct. And I would think three or four years would be great, but I know you've got a lot going on, so, you know, whatever's feasible. I don't want to put a lot of burden on your department.
I know, it's all managed in our finance system and so that is fairly easy to pull out except for 2021 and 2122 is not at all current. So that would require scouring agenda items over the past two years, much more difficult to pull that data, but I can certainly work on that.
Thank you.
All right, seeing nothing else, we're adjourned until tomorrow.